Yes, Mayor, we are ready to begin. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the October 6, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Imperial Beach City Council, and I call this regular meeting to order. Council members and staff, please mute yourselves, and when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting and thank everyone for their patience and understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. This meeting must comply with California Government Section 54953E and all other provisions of state law, and now our city clerk will announce the public comment process.
Evening, this is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. Please note in the subject line the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like to comment your, if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Written comments will be read by the city clerk or staff for up to three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom by computer, mobile phone, app, or the dial-in number. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, use the raise hand feature on the computer or mobile phone app, or if dialing in, press *9 on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, City Clerk Kelly. If you could please take the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilwoman Aguirre?
Aguirre here.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez?
Leyva Gonzalez here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Fisher here.
Mayor Protem Spriggs?
Spriggs here.
And Mayor DeDina?
DeDina here. Great, thanks, everybody. And now, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance with Cub Scout Pack or Cub Scout Pack 866, I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence for Martin Brandt, a beloved local Imperial Beach Boy Scout leader who's been a Boy Scout leader for a long time, died unexpectedly recently, and I was with the pack yesterday, and I know they're devastated, still feeling the loss. Talked about what a huge loss that is just for the local organization that serves a lot of the South Bay. So we want to send out our best to them, but just have a moment of silence and recognition of all his great community service with our city and our community. Great, thanks. And now, I think it's fitting that we're trying to get back to the thing of having local kids and organizations give our, do our pledge of allegiance. So yesterday I was with, it was Wee Blow Pack 866 as they recorded the Pledge of Allegiance. It's not perfect. It's a little low, the volume. Really nice boys and kids, and they really, really were honored to do this. So you may want to turn up your volume, but the, so we want to thank them for doing that, and we look forward to having the other local kids organizations and students do this, to give back that tradition. So, thank you. Great, thanks, guys. Well, we'll work on our audio, but they're still very nice. They're very honored to do it, and it's a big deal for them. So it was very nice. And so now we come to the part where we do reimbursements, disclosure reports, and assignments to committees from our council members, starting with Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On September 16, I attended the MTS Board of Directors meeting where we discussed the Palm Avenue Trolley Station project. A total of 390 homes will be built, the majority of which are for low-income residents, which is really great news for our region. That item will be brought back on the 14th of this month to allow the developers to do a little bit more outreach here in our community of Imperial Beach. And then on the 20th, I attended, along with you all, our council retreat. I was very pleased of, on how well it went and how productive our conversation was. So thank you all, colleagues and staff, for a great job in the report. Then on September 23, I attended MTS's Public Security Committee meeting, for which I am vice chair. We're getting ready to transition to our new security contractor. So if you take the trolley on our buses, you'll see our security officers and code enforcer officers wearing different uniforms. And the goal of that is to convey an attitude of being ambassadors to our system. And then on the 28th, I attended the San Diego Regional Policy and Innovation Leaders Meeting convened by Chair Fletcher, the San Diego Foundation Brokeaton Institution. This, this group is basically a regional effort to help make data-driven decisions and recommendations on how the region is going to spend the close to $3 trillion that is expected to come to our region through the Build Back Better Act, the infrastructure bill. So, of course, I highlighted some of our needs regarding stormwater infrastructure, saltwater intrusion with sea level rise, and our housing issues as well. And then on October 1, I attended Sandex Transportation Committee meeting, of which I'm an alternate on. We were considering early action pilot projects that are geared to study the benefits of increasing the frequency of bus lines in underserved communities such as Imperial Beach. I was lucky to be there because the 933, 934 had not been included, so I recommended that it be studied and included. So it was. And I also, my recommendation to study first mile, last mile traveled on the blue and orange lines to make our routes to and from the trolley safer be included as well, and that was accepted and passed. And then just finally, I'd like to share some really exciting news with you all. Today, I have been appointed by the Speaker of the California Legislature, Anthony Rendon, as Commissioner Steve Padilla's alternate, representing San Diego County on the California Coastal Commission. I was sworn in this morning by our very own city clerk, and Jack Clerk Kelly, and I very much look forward to representing Imperial Beach and the entire county on such an important decision-making body. And that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. That's great. Awesome news.
Thank you.
Um, especially when they meet near Mavericks. You can watch, maybe in the winter, you can, at Half Moon Bay, you can watch the big surf. And I think they have it at the hotel right there on the cliff, so should be awesome. Great, great news.
Maybe, maybe I can surf it.
I'm laughing only because it scares me to watch it, even in movies. So anyway, even the shore break there is gnarly. So anyway, um, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. Commissioner, I mean Commissioner, you're the Commissioner. Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Councilwoman Aguirre. That's, that's awesome. Thank you very much. Um, I, today I actually met with the Chair of the Bay Shore Bike Way Working Group, Marcus, National City Councilman Marcus Bush, and Josh Clark from Sandag. And basically, we just kind of was going over the upcoming agenda for the next coming meeting, which is October 13. There's a couple of items on there that directly affects Imperial Beach. So I'm very excited and looking forward to meeting and moving forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. You know, I had the opportunity to meet with the founder of the San Diego Air Cold Club, who is going to be hosting their annual event this Saturday. They're grateful for the hospitality extended by the city and for the welcomed opportunity to be part of, part of a great weekend here in Imperial Beach. You know, I've seen it was referred to in the local paper as a bug invasion, and so everybody be prepared. Looking forward to another great event filled with families and lots of spectators. I will say one thing about the San Diego Air Cold is not only are they a group of car enthusiasts, but they also give back to the community. I've seen them at their local meets pass around the hat to help somebody in need, and now they have a nonprofit status, and I think they're going to extend their community charitable giving even farther than they've ever been able to do before. So grateful for that. This past Saturday, had the opportunity to go to Symphony by the Sea. Mayor, great job kicking it off. I'm glad you got everybody rallied up and made sure they gave a good welcome to Imperial Beach, to the symphony. So it was a great event. Weather was fantastic and well-attended. I love to be at events here in Imperial Beach that are mostly locals, and again, lots of families. So it was a great event. Thankful to the port and all those involved to bring this event back to Imperial Beach. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. It was great. It was a nice evening. Mayor Protem Spriggs?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations again to Councilmember Paloma Aguirre for her appointment as an alternate to the California Coastal Commission, an alternate for our San Diego representative, Mr. Padilla, who is on the City Council of Chula Vista and is currently the Chair of the California Coastal Commission. So a very important appointment for Imperial Beach. A lot of what I report on regularly and will report on today has to do with the relationships with the Coastal Commission, and I look forward to now having maybe some, some one-on-one briefings and discussions with Councilmember Aguirre so that she's, gets a detailed sense of what's going on with the coastal cities, these are these the Coastal Commission, and how we might move forward with improved relationships so that the coastal cities can all be on board with planning for sea level rise and move forward for the benefit of California. So the, our leadership committee, which is six of us from each region, I'm the San Diego region, met on Thursday, the 16th. We're planning for a number of engagements with the, with the work, sea level rise working group, which met the following day. And we're basically working on three, three areas, three sort of documents, and the working group to present to the Coastal Commission probably at their November meeting. One is what I've talked about before, which is a faith, a document on the phased approach to local coastal program, planning and implementation, a phased approach. We've moved forward pretty far with that. I think we've got, at the level of the working group, which includes two commissioners, a pretty good consensus on areas of agreement. There's still some areas that we're not going to be able to address at this point, but we're going to move forward with everything that we can agree on and keep moving forward. Related to that document, there are two others that we're going to be looking at this Friday for the first time. One is a joint statement on regional approaches to sea level rise adaptation planning. Regional approaches, meaning cooperation between adjacent cities, cities and counties, so that there's a coordinated approach that's not one area not doing something that conflicts with what another area is doing, sharing resources, sharing planning, et cetera. And that's obviously a sensible approach when regional issues are involved. A third element is an approach to securing LCP concurrence at an earlier point in the often long, year-long, years-long discussions with the Coastal Commission staff, as an LCP is being developed, that often can get derailed. So reaching concurrence at earlier points, again, picking the points of agreement and emphasizing them more than the points of difference. And related to that, an approach to what we call elevation of, to a higher level. Elevation, meaning if there is a snag, how can, what's the appeal process so that it doesn't stop and it doesn't go to the commission and get voted down? Or be scheduled, as Delmar did, on two occasions, to have the LCP reviewed by the Coastal Commission, and then they pull it at the last minute because there's not a local consensus or an agreement with the staff, so they can go in with the staff supporting what the city wants to do. So these are all challenges that many cities face up and down the coast. So an elevation process to creating some sort of an appeal to resolve these issues earlier is really important. Next, or this Thursday, the Metro JPA is meeting, and we will be looking at some major contract approvals. And that's my report. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Spriggs. Just on the Symphony by the Seas, wanted to thank Jaclyn Kelly, Shannon Bullock, and Courtney Stevens, as well as Tom Santos, and all the other staff, public work staff, and pilot staff that made that possible, as well as the county and the port, for the funding to make it, make it happen. Takes a lot of work. And obviously, San Diego State, the Symphony Orchestra, and their wind symphony, which were remarkable. All the, a lot of the parents come, as you all know, that's great, really, really nice event, which we had more funding to do more public music events, because I think they really do bring people together. It was very nice and very emotional to see Michael Gertis, the first conductor. There was our first public performance, you know, since the pandemic. So it was really nice. They really, those students really appreciate the opportunity to perform for our crowd, who I think is reciprocal. So it's a very nice evening. It's nice to see you guys there. And so then on September 20, oh, September 23, San Diego Community Power Meeting, the County of San Diego was approved into the admission of the Elite Club of Energy, Clean Energy Cities, including Imperial Beach. National City is considering joining as well, so that's good. Looking forward to having the county there, starting in January. On September 24, I met with Governor elect Abaha Marina Avila and her transition team. We talked about water quality specifically, and they're really, really just throwing out water reuse, water reuse, water reuse. They're very interested in, in obviously working on this. We'll see what happens, but that was a nice chance to meet with her. On September 30, we met with Senator Atkins Housing Staff to work, talk about getting affordable housing money for Imperial Beach. That's something we have to work on. Very concerned that there's a lot of discussion and debate at the state level about housing, but we can't seem to get any, and we have active projects that could use funding. And the same thing, October 1, I met with Assemblymember Ward to talk about that as well. And so, again, really trying to nail down some of the funding that could be available for housing and getting them to make sure it's a priority for Imperial Beach. We'll be meeting with the governor's staff, housing staff as well, and then setting up meetings with Benways, so as well, just to hit all the potential sources of funding, and then the county as well, to see if we can get some funding. So we've got to fund these affordable housing projects. I think the project at, in a Palm Avenue, at Saturn, the MTS project was absolutely brilliant. It's a great example of great public policy. Although those units cost $600,000 apiece, so the issues are coming up of how expensive that is, but, but it's worth to, we need to build that housing. So, anyway. And then today, I was a panelist at the Industrial Environmental Association's annual environmental meeting, it's their 37th. And to talk about the Tijuana River with Dave Smith, who's the Assistant Director of Region 9 for the EPA, has been a big help on all our issues with water quality, and then Dave Gibson of the Water Board. And it was good, because I think Dave Smith really talked about where they're heading in terms of planning for the river valley, and they're looking, I think, to make an announcement on, in November. That's what he talked about. So on sort of what their final plan will be, but it's very clear that it's going to be a comprehensive plan. There'll be both sides of the border. And I think everyone agrees that water reuse is the way to go. We've got to, not only from a water perspective, but from an energy and climate perspective. One thing that has been ignored is just of methane. The amount of methane in sewage, which is arguably the worst greenhouse gas possible, has been unaccounted for when the sewage spills. So that's something we need to look at. Anyway, and then I'm wearing the hat for the US Open in Huntington Beach, which happened, surfing contest, professional surfing contest, two weeks ago. The world's best surfers were Huntington. Surf was great. Water was clean. Birds, dolphins, you name it. Now it's a oil spill disaster site. It's the second, two of the largest spills in California history have been in Huntington. Oil's moving south towards San Diego County. The closed beaches in Dana Point, Laguna Beach, 144,000 gallons. So just makes us realize why we, Imperial Beach cares so much about the coast, and we send all our best to all our colleagues and the residents of Orange County and possibly North San Diego County, who may be suffering from this impact. But we all suffer when we lose our coastline to oil spillings, oil spills. So anyway, with that, I will turn it over to City Hall, City Manager Hall, as an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Manager Hall. First, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this Friday night is the Mar Vista High School homecoming football game, so we look forward to a Mariner victory. But they will also be having fireworks and in conversations with our animal services, which is provided by the Humane Society. They wanted to make sure this is a good time to, to send some reminders to some of our residents. One, make sure that your pets' collars and microchips are up to date, because every time there are fireworks in the community, we have a few animals that react to that and end up getting lost. So that's a good reminder. And then if your pets are sensitive to the fireworks, be sure to keep those indoors on Friday night. So again, we look forward to a Mariner victory. I think everybody loves fireworks, but there are some pets once in a while that are affected by the fireworks. And so we thought it'd be a good idea to remind people about the fireworks that will be happening this Friday night. And go Mariners. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Hall, what time do you expect the fireworks to go off, or do they expect the fireworks to go off?
You know, it'll be after the football game, so I would imagine somewhere around 8:30 or 9 o'clock. They'll probably put the, the team away pretty early, so I can't imagine it'll go into overtime or anything.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Any other announcements, Mr. Hall?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. And so, City Clerk Kelly will announce the public comments, if any, and we'll read the whole about the process.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is City Clerk Kelly. Each person, each person wishing to address City Council regarding items not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. In accordance with state law, council may not discuss or take action on an item not scheduled on the agenda. If appropriate, the item will be referred to the city manager. I do see one raised hand. Please identify yourself, state your first and last name, and whether or not you're a resident. And I'll begin with, it says Kelly, there's no last name. Again, please identify yourself, state your first and last name. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, thank you. This is Kelly McCormick, and I work in Imperial Beach in, as a public health educator, with a focus on youth alcohol, tobacco, and drug prevention. And I would like to thank Imperial Beach for its role as a leader in tobacco prevention. You were first in the region to ban the sale of flavored tobacco, setting the standard for others to follow. This well-considered ordinance came in response to overwhelming evidence that flavored tobacco products are driving the youth vaping epidemic. That leads me to ask you to consider a similar ban on the sale of flavored marijuana products. Flavored e-liquids are also being used to drive the sales of marijuana while literally sugarcoating the danger. The sales tactic is also seen with edibles like fruit gummies and chocolate bars. These pose an additional danger when young children get their hands on these high THC products not properly stored by adults. Marijuana use in any form raises the risk of mental health problems in those under 25 years of age. It is strongly linked with worsening depression, marijuana-induced psychosis, and suicide, among other issues. Early initiation of use, potency and frequency of use increase this risk. Thank you very much for giving this important issue your consideration.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one more public speaker, Peggy Walker. Please admit yourself, you have three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Peggy Walker. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I work with the County Tobacco Control Coalition in Imperial Beach, and like the earlier speaker, I too applaud your public health policy regarding the ban on flavored tobacco. So important for our youth. For years, my work involved research analysis on tobacco use, and now that's expanded to the impact of marijuana commercialization. My goal for Imperial Beach is that residents have the information they need regarding marijuana. Of particular concern to the public health community here is the unprecedented THC potency in marijuana products. Many are flavored, like those tobacco products, and are attractive to young people. As that earlier speaker noted, marijuana use is resulting in costly ER and hospital admissions with symptoms growing and ranging from severe vomiting, screaming, hallucinations, psychosis, and schizophrenia, to violence to self and others. Regarding this, I think that you, as a council, and others in the public, will find a new physician-sponsored, nonpartisan website useful. It's the International Academy on the Science and Impact of Cannabis, or ISIC, I-A-S-I-C one dot org. ISIC answers questions about marijuana and offers educational seminars focused on science, data, and peer-reviewed research led by international medical experts. ISIC's governing board includes San Diego's own Dr. Roni Lev, head of the Scripps Emergency Department, the Scripps Mercy Emergency Department. I would ask you to please check out ISICone.org. It's something you may even want to post on the city's website. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, that was the final comment, and there are no written comments.
Great, the public commentary is now closed, and we'll move on to the consent calendar item and see manager, consent calendar items one through seven. City Manager Hall has an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Manager Hall. I've been informed that Councilman Spriggs would like to remove item number seven from the consent for further discussion by the City Council. We would ask that if the City Council is inclined to remove that from the consent agenda, that we move that to immediately after the consent agenda, because we do have a consultant available for any questions, should the City Council have any. So just wanted to make that request if possible.
Sounds great. So I'll make a motion, and then, make sure it's okay. So I'd like to make a motion to have item number seven on the consent calendar moved to after the discussion of the consent calendar items.
I second that. I second it.
Great. City Clerk Kelly, can you please take the vote?
Yes, there has been a motion by DeDina, second by Leyva Gonzalez, to pull consent calendar number seven off the consent calendar for discussion after the consent calendar. Councilwoman Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyva Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Mayor, can we have a motion now to approve consent calendar items one through six?
Yes, I just want to make sure that I didn't miss any, have any public comment on that. So I'm
Oh, yes.
Actively, just making sure there wasn't any.
Okay. I have no written comments, and there are no raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items numbers one through six, and to pull item number seven off the consent calendar for reconsideration, which we already did. So, all right. So let me, let me restate that. Sorry, I'm reading the script. It got a little confusing. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items numbers one through six.
Spriggs, so move.
Aguirre, a second.
There has been a motion by Spriggs with a second by Aguirre to approve consent calendar item numbers one through six. Councilwoman Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyva Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. And now, just for the, make to sure we're all clear, and for the public to be really clear, we're now going to talk about item number seven, which is a resolution number 2021-59 authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the Tanco, Tanco Street Lighting Incorporated for the Streetlight Ownership and Lead Conversion Project. And City Manager Hall, well, is that you leading that discussion?
Mayor DeDina, I did have a chance to speak with Councilman Spriggs about some of his concerns. Mayor Dedina, I did have a chance to speak with Councilman Spriggs about some of his concerns. And so we'll let him jump in, but we do have Eric Minichelli here, the city public works director who probably has the most information about it. Um, what you see on your screen right now is a summary of the financial analysis and this, this document addresses several of the concerns that Councilman Spriggs would like to talk about. So we have. Um, placed it on the screen so that he can refer to it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I assume that's an invitation for me to, uh.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. I'm trying to go between two agendas and a script and then that. Maybe Mr. Hall, before we start, Mr. Hall, could you just give a summary of what this project is so we can all, um, be clear about and the public can be clear about what we're talking about?
I'm happy to jump in here. This is Erica Minichelli, Public Works Director.
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, we've got a capital improvement project that was approved in the last, uh, two-year budget related to. The negotiation for purchase and eventual conversion to LED. Of the streetlights that SDGNE owns in the city of Imperial Beach. Um, it's a, it's a large-scale project in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. This item is. A, a contract with a, a Tango Lighting, their consultant that. Their expertise is in negotiating these deals with the, uh, utility companies. Uh, for the, for the city to be able to purchase, uh, the lighting structures and, and move forward with. Uh, at some point, a capital project. Uh, to, to convert the lights to LED and then add lights as needed as part of that project in areas where. Uh, maybe things are a little darker than we'd like to see. So they, they, they do, um. What do they call the, uh, lighting studies and, and things like that? Uh, so we can get the lighting throughout town, uh, where we want it. But the first part of the project is, is the negotiation with, with SDGNE and, and they're going to be, you know. Probably cantankerous type negotiations and these guys are experts in that field.
So just to be clear, so we're all clear, we're, this is a streetlight, a neighborhood streetlight project to convert streetlights or add new LED lights that are brighter and safer, make neighborhoods safer. How many lights are we talking about? Just so we're all clear.
I, I think our count seems to be that SD, we've got about a thousand lights in town. We own a couple hundred and SDGNE owns the rest.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Thanks. And this, and what we're talking about with this item number seven, it's just a professional services agreement for the seventy thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Good. Take it away, Councilmembers Spriggs. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, when I read the staff report, uh, on this item, uh, I thought that it would be worth pulling it. Um, because it involves a significant, uh. Effort to improve lighting in Imperial Beach. Uh, save money. And move to a more environmentally sound approach to, uh, the use of electricity. In other words, less, less electricity, more efficient. Uh, lighting in the form of LED lighting. Uh, I also, so I thought it would be worth the public. Knowing a little bit more about this and hearing it again, because when we discussed it. A while back as part of our capital improvement program, we didn't really have this kind of detail. Uh, we didn't really go into it. It seemed like a good idea and it was, you know, included it as one of many capital improvement projects. So. Um, just as a general practice, when these big projects come back up again, it, I don't think we should just include them on, uh, on consent. I think as a matter of public interest, we should actually. Uh, bring them forward, even if the discussion is very short. And I, I think this, um, this sheet in front of us is very informative. Um, now, just to be clear, the amount that we are approving. Uh, is an amount, an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars to Tango for, uh, uh, some initial, uh, services. Uh, vis a vis negotiating with the, with SDGNE, uh, et cetera. Um, the project cost itself, according to the staff report. And the public would have to have opened this item up to see is, um. LED streetlight ownership and conversion, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, five hundred and eighteen dollars. So, uh, that's in addition to the, um, seventy thousand plus that might be involved with, with Tango. So there's a significant amount of cost for doing this, which is also a reason why I believe this is a matter of public interest. And council consideration, uh, and understanding of what, of what we're doing on the, on the cost side as well as on the benefit side. We're pretty clear about the benefits, uh, but, but really, uh, what are the costs? Now, the argument, um, the city staff make, which I think is a good argument, is that the savings over twenty years. Uh, this, this is the staff report are going to, uh, be significantly more than the cost somewhere of. According to the staff report of around one million dollars. Why can't I see it now? Naturally. Eh, yeah, one point one million over twenty years. Uh. So that time period, it, it's kind of, uh, interesting because that one point one million over twenty years. Is a long period of time to recoup the benefits. Uh, those dollars, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years from now are going to be worth a lot less. Whereas the, uh, roughly six hundred thousand dollars of outlay to do this project. Is a current cost with current dollars. Uh, so I thought we should be eyes open about the fact that. By the time we recoup, if, if we could either discount the current dollars over that time period. Uh, which would really increase this cost because, uh, those dollars. Present value of these, those dollars is worth a lot more in the future, or the future. Estimated cost is going to be worth a lot less in today's dollars because it'll be depreciated by. At least two or three percent inflation over twenty years. So that's quite a bit of depreciation. So I'm just saying that. The cost recovery aspect of this. Is probably not a justification for doing the project. Um, who knows what inflation is going to be? It's probably going to be a wash in terms of the expense. Uh, versus the, the cost savings. And, uh, if we're going to do it, we're doing it because we want to use less electricity. We want to have better lighting. Uh, we want to have, uh, more safety in our neighborhoods. Uh, the, for those, those kinds of considerations. Those are not the considerations that were in the original staff report. Uh, so that's another reason I wanted to bring it out so that we can talk about the positives of this project. Uh, because it was really the costs, uh, and, and, uh, the one point one million dollar projected savings that were discussed. In the, uh, in the staff report, uh, which to me made this a cost justified. Uh, project based on the staff report, whereas really there are other considerations not in the staff report. That, uh, I think we've already talked about. So that's basically it, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, council colleagues. I, I, I thought we should, uh, be clear that. Uh, this is a significant capital cost to us. Uh, SDGNE is charging something according to this, uh, document, something like five thousand dollars a pole. Or is it five hundred?
It's five hundred.
It's five hundred dollars a pole. These are, uh. To me, that's really excessive because those are old, many of them are old. Uh, we. They all, they own the poles already and they're going to sell it and sell them back to us. But my understanding is that we are responsible for the maintenance of the poles, even though they're owned by SDGNE. If somebody runs into one of them and damages it, it's we who pay the repair and expense. Uh, not SDGNE. If one deteriorates, uh, by termite infestation or whatever. Uh, it's we that would pay for that rather than SDGNE. So, um, this should really be a public service, seen as a public service on the part of SDGNE. And, and they should provide those poles back to Imperial Beach at a much lower cost. Uh, so that we don't end up spending half a million, more than half a million dollars for something that's essentially. Uh, should be seen as a public, a, a public service and for which SDGNE really isn't, um. Uh, generating revenue out of the polls or generating, uh, revenue out of the electricity bills that we, that we pay. So that would be my, those are my comments and I would hope that. Uh, our contractor, if we approve this contract, would do everything they can to whittle this cost down. To significantly below, um, the, um. Five hundred and, um, eighty dollar, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, anticipated for the total cost of the project. Okay. I know that's a lot of information. I, I, I hope, I hope it's clear enough that this is something that we, we want to do. But, um, we're overpaying SDGNE to do something for the good of everybody. And, uh, we really should get a, a better, uh, deal from SDGNE than, than what they seem to be offering here.
Um, that's fine. I try to make, thanks for the comments. I just want to make sure for any additional con, discussion. So we're all clear and the public's clear. And, and Mr. Minichelli, I just want to make sure we've already approved this project in a previous meeting. We're just approving the seventy thousand dollar, uh, public ser, services, contract services agreement. With Tango Street Lightning, is that correct? We're not debating the merits of this project because we already approved it. Is that correct?
I mean, uh, the, the project itself is a capital improvement project that is, is funded and budgeted for the budget cycle process that occurred last July or June. So. Uh, yes, and this is simply one of the contracts that's going to have to be executed to make the project happen.
Okay, great. Um, additional comments, questions from our council colleagues?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. I mean, uh, for staff, I don't know who, but has SDGNE shown or indicated that they are open to discuss lowering costs for us?
They, uh, this is Eric Minichelli, Public Works Director. Uh, you know, their, their costs are set up. It's tariff rates that have existed for, for many years, LS one, LS two, these are the, the, what they. Term them. It's, it's, it's very standardized cost that they have per pole and that's charged. Uh, you know, countywide. I, I don't know that we'll get an individual deal for Imperial Beach. These are, these are set. Tariffs that, that, that is negotiated, uh, you know, with the Public Utility Commission and whatnot. Uh, the bigger question is going to be how. Um, receptive they are to this conversation of us purchasing the poles themselves and the lights on them. Uh, that, that will be an interesting conversation.
And could you remind me that where, where the majority of the light poles are located within the city?
They are actually all throughout the city. I don't have a, a map, uh, available right now, but we can show that at a later date. But we've got poles on, you know. Uh, from generally from Third Street East.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I had a couple of questions for, uh, Director Minichelli. I, I, I'm just curious. So the, you talk about the negotiations with, uh, SDGNE. Have, have they, have we approached them with this? Uh, project previous to this? And if we did, I mean, is there a possibility they could say no to us?
They certainly can, uh, choose to say no, but there are legal consequences. They, they, a lot of utilities, this is a. This is a process that's kind of gone on with utilities up and down the coast, mostly in Northern California. It's now starting to happen in, in Southern California. And, um, SDG has been made aware that we are going to, uh, pursue this. And, um, if they choose to, um, you know, not. Offer a fair price for the poles, there are legal ramifications of that, then we could pursue acquiring the poles through a, through a, a court decision essentially. And again, uh, Tango Lighting is, is an expert in this field. They've done this for, uh, multiple other utilities, uh, throughout the state. And hopefully we'll have, uh, you know, um, less contentious conversations, but. These are major assets that we're going to be asking for a significant discount on.
Well, I just, I'm grateful for the, the forethinking again of our, our city staff because, you know, we, we look at this in terms of dollars, but we're also looking at resources, the savings. Of energy use over the course of, uh, you know, the next twenty years is absolutely astounding. And I think it just shows some social responsibility that we have. Um, you know, the resources that are natural and we think they might be in abundance. At some point they're going to run out. And if we're well ahead of that curve, you know, there, there's always more money to be had. We've seen that with ARPA funds and everything coming our way. And I think. Doing the right thing creates, uh, great karma for our city. So I'm, I'm glad to see those projects. I know that the expense is. Quite large, um, but I think that again, the social responsibility rings true to my ears.
Additional questions or comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just had one other question to ask, uh, our Public Works Director, Mr. Minichelli has, uh. Uh, done a good job putting our, 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 um, capital projects together, including this one. Um, why doesn't SDG, why can't we just ask SDGNE to install LED lights on their poles? And to expedite that process, we could possibly offer them a lump sum payment that would be substantially less than half a million dollars. We, why do we have to buy the poles in order to install LED lights? Why can't they do that? Wouldn't that be in the public interest, uh, in terms of saving, saving money and providing better lighting?
Uh, this is Public Works Director Minichelli. I, I know Andy's had some conversations with SDGNE about the possibility of them installing LEDs on, on our lights. My understanding is. Uh, we've heard that talk for many, many years and, and nothing's really happened. Andy, would you like to step in a little here or, or, uh, am I not characterizing that correctly?
Mayor, this is Manager Hall. One of the real challenges that SDGNE has expressed to us is that they, they have a. Large supply of the existing sodium gas lights that we have in the community, and they would need to go through that supply before they started replacing our lights with LEDs. Um, again, they. They may do that, but they would do them as either their supplies dwindle or as the lights go bad. I don't know that they would do them upfront, um, as a large project. So I think they would do one or two at a time. Um, certainly, certainly worth having that discussion and certainly worth having Tango on board to help us have that discussion. But Councilman. Um, Spriggs, you may be correct. That may be something that's, that's certainly an alternative that we need to talk about with SDGNE. And we certainly would want the expertise of Tango alongside. We, we, we don't have. Um, an electrical department in our community. We don't provide electrical services like some communities do. Um, so it might be really good to have that question, um, answered. And I think we should get that question answered, but we probably want to do it with, um, some electricians on, on our side of the table.
Uh, I understand that that's, uh, Tango's expertise and that's, that's great. And I, I think we, we need that and it's probably worth the. Uh, you know, the, the, the contract cost for us to have a technically, and, uh, I would also say. Um, environmentally and politically strong discussion with SDGNE. Uh, on this. If they've got a surplus of old-school lights that are out of style, expensive. Resource-consuming, that seems to me to be their problem, their mistake. And they shouldn't continue to pass that on to their customers like Imperial Beach. They should be finding a way to dispose of those lights. Maybe at a discount to, uh, a, a state that's not converting. Or a city that's not converting like we are, that doesn't have a climate action plan, uh, that may want those at a discount, maybe across the border. I don't know, but it seems to me that it's their problem and they're imposing it, their inventory, their poor inventory decisions are being imposed on us. Uh, and that to me is just wrong and, uh, and we should really go at them, uh, on, on that issue. Thank you.
Um, before we continue, just to answer the name of our questions or comments, I forgot to ask for public comments. So is there any public comment, City Clerk Kelly?
I will check with members of the public, Mr. Mayor. Um, if there's members of the public participating via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak. Okay, there are no oral comments, Mr. Mayor, and I have no, uh, written comments as well. Thank you.
Um, are there additional questions or comments from the council? Great. Well, thanks everybody for the comments. Um. I, I just want to echo, uh, Councilmember Fisher, saving, the, the energy savings all laid out here on the screen are just astronomically great. And this reminds me of discussions on water quality on the border and what people should do versus like doing things quickly. And I think we're getting to that point of. The EPA talked about knowing that they need to get things done quickly. So. I hate to have our residents wait any longer. I know that all of us who've knocked on doors and all of us have knocked on doors know that streetlights. Are arguably the most important thing that are, in addition to crosswalks and safe streets and people driving too fast. Arguably are one of the most important things that our residents talk to us about all the time. So let me get those streetlights out. For me. We're saving huge amounts of energy. So we're saving the planet. We're putting people to work doing. We're putting people to work doing it. Um, we're making our residents and our neighborhoods safer and nicer. And so like, it's just a huge triple win. So anyway, uh, let's figure this out. Uh, great points, uh, Councilmember um Spriggs, but let's get these streetlights up and get people to work to do that. This is our own little Green New Deal. Some of you may not like that, but hey, you know what? We're saving huge amounts of money and putting people to work and making life better and saving the environment. So it's it's good for me. So with that, is there a motion? Make sure, is there a motion to, I'd like to enter your motion to approve uh resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-nine, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Tango Street Lighting Incorporated for the streetlight ownership and LED conversion project? Is there a motion?
Spriggs, so move with the request that the points discussed here be included in the in the um negotiations on our behalf by our contractor Tango with the with SDG and E.
Is there uh, Speaker Kelly, did you get that?
Um, I did, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Is your second?
Great, thank you. Speaker Kelly, please uh take a vote.
There has, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, there has been a motion by Spriggs with a second by Fisher to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-nine along with the points made uh in tonight's discussion to have them um discussed with Tango and SDG and E. Um, Councilmember, Councilwoman Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, yes.
Councilmember Leyba Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyba Gonzalez, yes.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, yes.
And Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, everybody. And now, um I'm not even going to say anything because I was going to say something about some of the language we used about the future. And now we're talking about um this issue, but I'm not going to make any jokes about it because it's it is important. Uh, public hearings, um, item number one, and that's a Marx consideration of conditional use permit. Regular coastal permit and categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines section. Class one for a palm reading, fortune telling, use psychic visions of nine three four palm in the CMU uh one zone. And um
Mayor Dedina, this is Manager Hall. I wanted to defer to Councilwoman Agiri, who has an announcement to make. Sorry about that.
Wait, do I need to declare the public hearing open before we do that or?
After. It would be after that.
Done for. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, due to a state imposed mandate, I am going to have to recuse myself from this discussion and vote because I live within five hundred feet of the proposed project. So, thank you.
I predicted that. Okay, um. And now I'm gonna hit the gavel on the sounding block and declare the public hearing open. Assistant Planner Ayala will give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Raina Ayala. Tonight I'll be presenting use twenty-one dash zero zero three two. The applicant, uh, NASA Tiffany Marks, who represents the business Psychic Visions, is with us on Zoom tonight. And she'll be available for questions along with staff after this presentation. Next slide. This project consists of an application for a conditional use permit to operate an in-person palm reading and fortune telling establishment. No alterations or modifications to the existing commercial building or site have been proposed. The proposed business would be located within an existing commercial building at nine thirty-four Palm Avenue, which is in the CMU one general commercial and mixed use zone. This zone requires that fortune telling and palm reading establishments obtain a conditional use permit. And a conditional use permit must be authorized by the City Council. Typically, a design review case and a site plan review um would accompany a conditional use permit. Um, however, since the applicant is not proposing significant changes in land use intensity and has not proposed doing any alterations or modifications to the existing building or site, the applicant has requested a waiver for the design review case and the site plan review. Next slide. Here we see an aerial view of the project site, which consists of one parcel that's approximately fifty-two hundred square feet and is located on the north side of Palm Avenue between Ninth and Emery Street. On the same parcel directly behind the existing commercial building is a parking lot that provides nine usable parking spaces, including one ADA space for the four existing retail spaces. Three of the retail spaces are currently occupied by a pharmacy, an insurance agent, and a nail salon. Sorry, guys, I live on the flight path in San Diego. Um, anyway, the applicant proposes to occupy the remaining four hundred and twenty-five square foot retail space, which was previously a barber shop. Next slide. So this is an image of the existing commercial building showing the vacant retail space that the palm reading establishment would occupy. Some of the signage for the business would locate in the cabinet sign that's shown above the door and in the window that is covered in this photo. Additionally, the landscaping area below the window would be restored as part of the project. Next slide. This is an image of the same commercial building only facing east to show an existing pole sign, which the applicant is proposing to utilize for their business signage. Next slide. Here are images of the parking lot, which shows there are nine usable parking spaces, including one ADA space for four retailers that are located within the building, um, which measures approximately twenty-three hundred gross square feet. So per Imperial Beach Municipal Code, commercial properties with a mix of uses such as this commercial building require one space for every five hundred square feet of roast floor area. So the parking requirements for this site would continue to be met. Next slide. Fortune telling and palm reading establishments are permitted in Imperial Beach with an approved conditional use permit, which must be approved by the City Council, and they must meet certain location requirements that are specified in the city's municipal code. Um, these requirements are outlined here on this slide, and they include that the business may be, may not be located within a hundred feet of any property that is zoned residential or is residential in character. The business may also, may also not be located within five hundred feet of a mobile home park, uh manufactured housing community or senior housing. And the business may not be located within a thousand feet of any similar establishment. Next slide. So here's a couple maps. The one on the left is showing a hundred foot radius and uh essentially demonstrates that nine three four Palm Avenue is not located within a hundred feet of any residential properties. And over on the right-hand side, we can see that the nine three four Palm Avenue is surrounded by properties that are zoned commercial mixed use. So there's no residentially zoned properties within a hundred feet of the project site. Next slide. Uh, this slide, we have two more maps. Uh, the one on the left, we can see that the business location is, would not be located within five hundred feet of a mobile home park, manufactured housing community or senior housing. And on the right, we can see a thousand foot radius, which shows that the business um would not be located within a thousand feet of a similar establishment. Next slide. So zooming in a little bit closer, this is the property that is located directly to the east of the project slide, site. Next slide. And here's the property that's located directly west of the project site. Next slide. These are the properties that are located uh directly south of the project site. So this is looking across Palm Avenue. Next slide. And then here is the property that's located directly north of the proposed business site. Next slide. So the applicant proposes to operate their fortune telling business Monday through Saturday, eleven AM to seven PM, and by appointment only on Sundays. Additionally, due to privacy concerns associated with the nature of the business, the applicant has stated that no more than two clients at a time would be allowed inside the retail space. As an ancillary use, clients would have the option to purchase um retail-related products during their visits, such as crystals, candles, or incense upon requests from the fortune teller or palm reader. And to the right of this slide, we have an example of some of the proposed signage, which would need to be modified to meet the Imperial Beach Municipal Code requirements. Next slide. Um, staff recommends that the City Council adopt resolution twenty twenty-one fifty-seven, approving the project. Staff can also um approve the project with modifications requested by the City Council or disapprove the project and deny the requested permits by making specific findings for denial or continue the public hearing to a specific future meeting to allow staff to provide additional information upon which a decision can be rendered. Staff is also requesting that the City Council modify the expiration date on the resolution from September thirtieth to October twenty-first since the public hearing date for this uh item was moved to today. And that concludes my presentation. Um, available for questions if anybody has some.
Well, first, let's go to public comment. Do we have Speaker Kelly, do you have any public comments?
I will begin with the mem- I will begin with the members of the public um participating via Zoom. Um, if you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands and um I have no written comments.
Great, thank you. So we can go straight to City Council comments, starting with Councilmember or questions or comments. Uh, Councilmember Leyba Gonzalez.
I have no comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fisher.
Likewise, no comments.
Great, uh, Councilmember, um, Mayor Potem Spriggs.
Just, just a question for our city attorney. Is Miss Lyon um on on the Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. This is Miss Lyon.
Okay, by, if we were to approve this conditional use permit, that does not carry with it any implied direct or indirect uh approval of of the nature of the business other than um I guess what I'm trying to say is if somebody is unhappy with the results of their um visit, can they sue the city for approving this business in a conditional use permit?
No, so just the conditional use permit is just determining the appropriateness within your zoning code, et cetera. So we're, the council is never essentially um approving, I guess, any type of business um because those requirements are through either state requirements or other requirements like that. So condit- approving the conditional use permit is just making, approving the resolution with the findings related to the zoning issues as specified in staff's resolution.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I had.
Um, I was reminded by our City Council, Kelly, I may not have declared the public hearing open. Did I? I I thought I wasn't, I did, right? Okay, and was that a different comments, Speaker Kelly, from a different agenda item? But anyway, okay, we're we're done. Thank you for commenting that. Okay, I don't have any questions or comments. So I, without further ado, I'd like to close the public comment period. And then um I would like to close the public hearing. I'm closing the public hearing now. And then I'd like to enter a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-seven, approving a conditional use permit, regular coastal permit and categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines. Section fifteen three oh one, class one, allowing for palm reading, fortune telling establishment nine three four Palm Avenue, which is located in the CMU one zone. Is there a motion?
Spriggs, so move.
Fisher, second.
Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Um, there has been a motion by Spriggs with a second by Fisher to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-seven. Councilwoman Agiri, how do you vote? Oh, I'm sorry, not Councilmember Gary. Um, Councilmember Leyba Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyba Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried by the following votes, ayes, Leyba Gonzalez, Fisher, Spriggs, Dedina, disqualified Agiri due to a potential, due to a conflict of interest.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before you proceed, could I just um express uh my thanks to um uh Ms. Ayala for a a very clear uh presentation. And uh my apologies to her that we couldn't uh on this occasion pepper her with um interesting questions.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Spriggs.
Just one more comment. I I I know colleagues have probably noticed that they have to apply for a coastal permit, regular coastal permit. The fact that our entire city is in the coastal zone and the Coastal Commission has jurisdiction over, in theory, over a small shop on Palm Avenue as far away from our city you can get from the coastal zone is absolutely ridiculous. And I would hope that at some point with Coastal Commission, we can figure out how to have uh a coastal zone in our city that doesn't include, it's very unusual for the, an entire city to have a coastal zone so that these poor folks have to go through bureaucracy that has nothing to do with, you know, coastal land use. So that's just going to throw that out there. I just noticed that. I'm sure other folks come and notice that. But we've got to figure this out. So the Coastal Commission isn't burdened with eight hundred thousand uh coastal permits that have nothing to do with coastal issues. So anyway.
Mr. Mayor, that that is a really good point. And I I'd like to ask uh Ms. Ayala, are there additional, is there additional paperwork and what is it that uh this applicant representing typical applicants in the coastal zone uh or other applicants in the coastal zone uh has made for the coastal uh permit? And is it not the case that that's approved at, as part of this action and it doesn't go to the Coastal Commission itself unless there's an appeal?
Yeah, so this is processed concurrently, and so it would be approved as um part of this resolution. And then we would file our notice of final action to the Coastal Commission. Uh, I don't, Tyler, I don't know if you want to add more to that response.
Yeah, this is Tyler Foltz, Community Development Director. So the city has maps that are laid out showing which portions are in the coastal areas and which ones aren't. A majority of the city that is in the coastal area, the City Council uh would actually take uh take final action on the coastal permit. And then other projects administratively, staff would take action on. Uh, the areas that are closer to the coastline, usually along the beach, along the bayfront, those, many of those are appealable to the Coastal Commission. So those along Seacoast Drive usually and and along the north end of the bayfront. Uh, and then there's some areas that are entirely in the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction. Uh, but the, it's it's not often that you get those. So there's three different categories for the coastal area in Imperial Beach. A majority of those uh would, uh, the City Council or city staff would be able to take action on. And we included that in the resolution today. It had all the findings for the coastal permit.
Thank you. And what what was the documentation, the nature of the documentation that had to be submitted by this applicant or any similarly situated applicant regarding the coastal permit?
Uh, not much because it was an existing building and had no impact on coastal resources. So much of it is showing that it meets our zoning, uh, it's an allowed use, it meets the location requirements. So a lot of it is just showing that it meets our, the zoning uh requirements uh that you also need to follow for a conditional use permit as well. So it's more or less making the same findings for for different permits.
Yeah, I just wanted to get to Mr. The the mayor's point, which I agree with a hundred percent that to the extent that we can do everything we can to reduce the the paperwork requirements for our uh our business community uh to what is really common sense necessary and nothing beyond that is 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 useful. And I know uh, Mr. Foltz, that that's uh, that's one of your goals as well. So uh, and and that of the city and city manager. So, thank you.
Yeah, and and no, this is not disparaging our city staff, but this came up with an ATM machine. I remember this Councilmember Spriggs that we, over on Ninth and Palm, um, I think it was like next to the uh thrift store um behind the Jack in the Box and and um and it was a coastal permit that people were, you know, potentially contesting. And so again, just, you know, some business owner, small business owner on Palm Avenue, and it may not seem like a big deal, but right, one more form to fill out is is stressful because, you know, they don't spend a lot of money doing that or time. I know I wouldn't want it. So anyway, that's all. Um, I think that goes to the Coastal Commission point, whereas we want the Coastal Commission focused on big issues that have to do with our beachfront and our bayfront rather than micromanaging everything else that goes on uh within these California cities. And I think that's a big issue for the Coastal Commission, our colleagues on the staff, our fellow council colleagues. When we talk about Coastal Commission, this is the big issue that's been happening is that, you know, people in San Clemente have to ask the Coast Commission for a coastal permit for a garage remodel in San Clemente, three blocks from the beach. And and this takes up huge amounts of time or now, rather than focus on big issues. So Imperial Beach has been good at pushing the Coast Commission to focus on big issues rather than worrying about whether there were coastal permit for a small business, you know, small building on Palm Avenue away from the coast. So that's it. With that, I said my piece. I'm really pleased that Councilmember Agiri is a perfect person to be on. As an alternate to Steve Pedy on the Coast Commission understands obviously these issues better than anyone. With that, I would like to adjourn the meeting. We'll see you guys next time. Thanks.